I'll call this meeting to order of a public hearing on Texas academic performance report. Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Mr. Andrew Gonzalez. Mr. Erasmo Lopez, Coach Armando Cuellar, and myself, Mr. Nieto. Item number three, public hearing on the Texas academic performance report. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, this public hearing is a requirement by the state of Texas. We have several things that will be reported by different members of our team. First of all, in the first slide. Next slide. So first of all, Wesaco ISD for 2019 accountability ratings is a B district. We're at an 88. Last year, we're at an 80. The year before, we were at 85.6 or an 86. So we're proud of that. Regarding, we are, I can't see the PowerPoint, accredited. And there are several categories that they rate districts. We are accredited, which is what we want to be. And when it comes to campus performances, all our campuses, all campuses are As or Bs. Most of them are Bs. We do have As. We're one of three, six A school districts from Laredo to Brownsville that has all campuses As and Bs. So it's quite an accomplishment. We're very proud of the entire team, an entire means entire parents, our bus drivers, just everybody, our teachers, our principals, our staff, you, all of us. So we're very proud of that. When it comes to campus objectives, Mr. Aguilar and Mrs. Peters are going to go over that. Our campuses do set goals. The goals are reflected in our campus improvement plans. We call them SAIPs here in our district. So we'll start with elementary. Mr. Aguilar.
Thank you, Dr. Canales. Mr. Nieto, board president, members of the board, good afternoon. As Dr. Canales mentioned, we do have our campus performance objectives as they are set by the campuses with our district improvement plan. We have a plan for learning. As you can see, you see the campuses there on their needs assessments, their goals based on the previous assessments, what they've determined that their goals are for this year. So you have those in front of you for all campuses.
Echoing that for all of the middle schools, and again, these are taken directly out of the campuses' student achievement improvement plans. So there are the goals for the middle schools, and then these are the goals for all four of our high school programs.
Continuing, one of the criteria set, we do have our 2019 special education determination status, and right now, we are, there's four categories. We're in category number two, the needs assistance, and we're currently working on that. This was the old PBMAS monitoring system. Now it's a results-driven report that we're looking at on the goals. So we're working on a strategic plan that's due February 7th, and we're currently working with our content areas. So we slightly missed the mark where they set their criteria, but we do have plans in place right now where we're working with our students. Continuing with 2019 star summary, year-over-year performance, as you can see here, third, fourth, and fifth grade reading. You have the comparison from 2018 and 2019. We want to focus on the purple, which is Wesaco ISD, and you see the growth from 19 to 2019 in third grade. You see the growth in fourth grade from an 84 to a 73, and you see the growth in fifth grade from an 89 to an 87. And you see that trend with the region and the state as well. Continuing with the math in third, fourth, and fifth grade, you see third grade, we're focusing on the purple, 87 from 19 to an 82 in 18 in third grade, and 84 to an 83 in fourth grade, and 95 to 94th and fifth grade. Continuing with the writing and the science, writing is where we had our significant jump from the previous year. As you can see, in 2018, we were at 57, so we were below the region and the state, but as you can see in 19, we regrouped and we jumped up to a 73. So that was a considerable jump there. If we're looking at science, we see that we're at, we're above the region and the state, but we stay, we maintain that level at 84 at the performance.
This is the graph that shows the middle school's sixth, seventh, and eighth grade reading. And we are struggling here. We really just maintained our progress. Dr. Lopez is working with the teachers on independent reading and reading for sustained amount of time because the test really is an endurance test. So we're working with our students to read for pleasure. The more they read, the better they will do. She's also working with the teachers specifically on learning how to better teach character analysis and inferences, which is a significant part of the test and where we're running into some trouble after they've analyzed the results. This year, for the first time, the PLCs, when they meet, they are on the campuses. And when they're on the middle school campuses and the high school campuses are doing learning walks, they're going to visit other teachers' classrooms to see what's happening in their classroom. We've gotten very positive feedback from the people participating in that. Our middle schools are also being coached by a Region One reading language arts consultant. She's coming in and coaching some of our teachers to assist us, and she gives feedback to the principals and to Dr. Lopez when she's been there. And we also are going to add Apex to the middle schools. Apex is a software program. It can provide independent practice specific to each learner's needs. We're using it in our high schools and have, it's been received very positively by our high school staff, so we're expanding that to our middle schools. So those are the results for middle school reading. Then middle school math, sixth grade is still our challenging area, but we did have an increase in sixth grade. Nora Lopez is working very closely with our sixth grade teachers, identifying exactly where we're running into trouble and working on those specific objectives. We did have slight gains in seventh grade where we are at the region and above the state, and also, we are above the state and the region in eighth grade math. So scores do improve as we go through middle school, but sixth grade's definitely our challenging year. Middle school writing is the first set of bar graphs there. Middle school writing, we maintained. Let me get to my notes, and I apologize. At the middle school, the test becomes, the writing test is, 35% of it is composition, which is different than the elementary where 25% of it is. So significant amount of weight is placed on the composition for the seventh grade writing test. We do have this year, new, many new seventh grade writing teachers, so Dr. Lopez is providing extra staff development for them after school in the afternoons, and they have been coming and have been very receptive of the extra support. Science, we did have a gain in science. We're above the region right at the state. Social studies were exactly tied with the region and the state, and we did have a slight gain there in social studies at the middle schools. High school, English one and two. We did have gains. We're still behind the region and the state, but we feel we're moving in the right direction. Again, stamina and reading. It is combined reading and writing test here, but the stamina and reading is very important. It's a long, lengthy test. So again, we're working with teachers very specifically in professional development, independent reading, trying to foster that love of reading so students read more and read for longer periods of time. We actually read, also read for 20 minutes in our language arts classes, so students get some of that sustained reading time. And we are also working with teachers on the accuracy of the composition scoring so we can make sure the students are getting the right kind of feedback as we go. And Dr. Lopez has seen great gains there, so we anticipate more gains this spring in English. Algebra one, a very specific problem. We were on track to do much better than we did, but we had a teacher on extended medical leave, and we had another teacher leave a month before testing. We were not able to replace that teacher. We attempted to do some recovery, but didn't get to where we wanted to be, but we're confident we're going to be at the high 80s this spring when we test. Biology and U.S. history. Biology had a gain. We're just running just behind the region, a little behind the state. We expect another gain. Mrs. Martinez is tracking those scores very carefully. U.S. history, we're, we stayed the same, running behind the region and the state, and Mr. Cantu is working very closely with U.S. history teachers. One thing he's working with them on is reading strategies, because of course, history is a lot of reading, so if we have a student running into reading issues, the social studies teachers need to know how to address that. So he's working with them very carefully on that.
With the next slide, you have 2019 star percent at the approaches gray level or above. As you can see, we're looking at the indicators below. All students, Hispanic, white, special ed, economically disadvantaged, and our EL learners. We have a comparison from 2019 to 2018. So you can see where the growth is at, or we slightly missed it. On our white population right there, we dropped, difference about three points, but all the others are above. When we're looking at the meats where we want to be, because this is for the post-secondary readiness target, if you're looking at the yellow for 2019, we slightly missed it by one in the special ed. And of course, the masters, the highest that we can go, we're above in all areas, so that's very strong right there.
Okay, attendance rate. You know, we work very hard on attendance across the district, and this is where we're running. We had a slight drop from last year, but we are above the region and also above the state. So we're running neck and neck with those and working very hard. The principals work hard on this every single day. Our drop in rates, this is where we do want to see the bars go down, and they are going down. This is the number of students who would leave us in grades nine through 12, again, carefully tracked every week by counselors and administrators at the secondary level. This is specifically for the high schools, nine through 12, but we did have a drop, so that was good news. And we are lower than the region and the state. That's a good place to be, lower than them. Graduation rates, you don't see a comparison from year to year here, but if, we start down with a four-year rate, which is actually at the bottom. And these are the rates that go into domain one, they're the state accountability graduation rates. So our four-year rate last, for the class of 2017, was a 92.8. So you can see, we had just a little bit of a drop. Where we are seeing improvement is in the five-year rate. Of course, we'd like to prefer to see the improvement in the four-year rate, but we'll take the five-year rate. These are students we get to come back to us in the fall to finish. Specifically there, we had, and it's not reflected here, but I looked up the data, we had a four-point gain in our ELs in the graduation rate for the five-year, a two-point gain in our ECODIS, a five-point gain in our special ed five-year graduation rate. So all of that led to a two-point gain overall in our five-year rate. So we are doing better when we get them back and getting them finished up. And then we can also get credit for our six-year rate, although at our high schools, normally the five-year rate for domain one is the one that we do the best on. Again, the goal is to get them out in four. This is the information on our students who are graduating with lots of letters there across the top. We did have in place recommended high school plan, and we now have the foundation plan, so this foundation high school plan with an endorsement, or the foundation high school plan with a distinguished level of achievement. And you can see, we're running above the state and the region there, and we did have an increase. That's mostly due to more students graduating on the endorsement plan because that was phased in. So our goal is that all students leave us with an endorsement. That is our goal when they enter high school. That's what we're working for, at least one endorsement. So we're doing well there. The K coherent course sequence and college-ready graduates. The college-ready graduates, actually, there is an increase there. We came up from 44.7 to 47. So we are working very hard on that, and we'll just look at the indicators that are taken into consideration there in a minute. The K coherent course sequence, we did have a drop, and this is for the class of 2018. We are working, of course, to engage more students in our career and technology education programs. There are excellent opportunities for them there. We just had our eighth graders, or kind of in the middle of having our eighth graders visit our CTE programs, trying to show them what's possible and what they have the opportunity to do, and that's watch very closely with Mrs. Iverland-Hurst staff and also high school staff. So these are the different college readiness indicators that we look at. We have AP dual course completion in all subjects. We had an increase in that indicator, although we are running behind the region, we are above the state. We did have a decrease in AP participation in all subjects. AP and dual enrollment do compete. They are not one and the same. So our AP did drop a little bit. Samantha Myss has been working this year with our AP teachers, trying to increase our AP enrollment. And also, we did have an increase in our AP examines that hit the criterion, which is a three-year, better on their tests. So we did have an increase there, and we are in that indicator above the region. The next one is on SAT ACT. So the first is the students who were tested, and we went down a little bit, but on February 25th, we are testing 100% of our juniors on the ACT test. All of our high schools will be testing all juniors that day. This is the first time we're testing on campus during the day for the ACT. So we are trying to increase that. We know the ACT is important for our students going into our Texas schools and many national schools outside of Texas, but we are working to increase that percentage significantly with a class of 2020. For scoring at or above criterion on the ACT and SAT, we're running behind the region, but we did have a significant increase from the class of 17 to 18. Again, that's the scoring on both tests together. And then the tests break out on the other two. We had a little bit of a drop in the SAT, but again, those are, we are running above the region on that and very close to the state. For the most part, our students trying to get into the competitive schools, take the SAT. We don't have a large number of students take that test. We focus on the ACT. And you can see, our ACT score did increase, so that was good news also. Although we're still running behind the state, we did make it above the region. This is enrollment at post-secondary institutions in the state of Texas, and this is only state institutions. It does not include any private schools, so we did have an increase in enrollment. The counselors work to have all of our students finish the Common App before they leave and apply to at least one school. We also had an increase in the number of students from the class of 2017 who could enroll in, again, a Texas state institution without remediation. So our goal is for students, of course, to enter ready to go and not have to take remedial coursework, so that was good news. These are GPAs that they can track for students that enrolled in Texas schools. This is public or the private schools in the state of Texas. So this is data that our high schools look at. Again, our goal is for students to enter college and then to be successful, especially past that freshman year, so that they can graduate on time with their group. Then this graphic shows our students that go to the university level, the kind of schools that they run into. So where it says enrollment type, most of our students are going into a public two-year institution like STC, which is convenient because it's right here in town. And then if you look at the smaller graph at the bottom with that same mustard color, of the students that enroll in STC, 65% of them do enroll full-time. And then the purple are the students that are going to a public four-year university. And again, the purple, smaller circle at the bottom, show that 97% of the students that enroll in the four-year university are going full-time. So that's just more data on our students who are leaving for our high schools. Then we switch over to safe schools. Mr. De La Rosa.
Good afternoon, Dr. Canales, members of the board. The disciplinary codes listed are used by TEA to evaluate or to determine potentially dangerous schools. As you can tell, there were three campuses that did have instances of these particular disciplinary codes. If you have any questions, you can go by, you can feel free to let me know, but we do not meet the definition of a persistently dangerous school under no child left beyond. The next slide is some of the things that we are doing to prevent school violence prevention and policies by WISD. I'd like to note two new things that were, that were set in place was, was the electronic access control for the elementary schools and the threat assessment teams that were formed throughout the district at every campus, which is required by Senate Bill 11. And I'd like to note that we are, if we're not the first, we're one of the very first districts that implemented the threat assessment teams. And those are my two slides. Next is HR.
Good evening, Dr. Canales and members of the board. I will be reporting on staffing information as reported to in PMS. First of all, we can find on this slide, the information reported here is a percentage of the total number of FTEs for each of the listed categories. If we start with the professional staff category, that includes the following categories listed below: teachers, professional staff, campus administration, and central office administration. It shows that Wesaco ISD is above, above the region and below the state. Nothing alarming there. Next category, we have the teacher category, which is all reported full-time teachers. Professional support, this category includes all other professional employees at the campus with the exclusion of teachers. We have counselors, dietiticians, librarians, OTs, PTs, school nurse, social workers, and athletic trainers located at the campus. The following category, we have campus administration, which is basically your principals and your assistant principals. The central administration category includes superintendent, assistant superintendents, executive directors, and central office department directors. The educational aid category includes all career professionals who serve as instructional aides, working directly to support with student instruction. Your auxiliary staff, we have our manual trades departments, maintenance, custodial, transportation, security department, and food service staff. Based on the information that I see here, there's only two categories that I would like to point out, and that's campus administration. WISD is at 1.1%, which is below both the state and the region, and this is attributed to the reclassification. If you recall, our SIFs were reclassified to assistant principals, and so that's why we have a low percentage there. However, our SIFs are coded under the professional support. The other category I would like to point out is educational instructional aids. We are at 8.7%, which again, it's below the state and the region, and we can see that increase next year with the addition of our pre-K aids that we brought on this year. Any questions on this slide? Okay, moving on. We have the average teacher salaries listed here. This is the total pay for all teachers in each category divided by the total number of FTE counts for each of the categories. Starting with the beginning teacher salary for WISD, it was listed at $46,481. I would like to point out that this is not the starting pay for a beginner zero-year teacher. This is the average. Okay? The starting pay for teachers in the year of 2018, 2019 was at $48,100, and through your generosity, this last year, we were able to bump that up for the 1920 school year to $51,250 to stay competitive with our region. Any questions here?
So you said for first-year teachers, $51,250?
Yes, and this is an average, sir.
Right, of course.
Of everybody in there, so if they didn't complete their full contract salary, that is why it's below.
So it also bumped up the one, one through five and six through 10, it's 11 through 20?
It is an average.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to our next slide. This is experience of campus leadership. This is, once again, the average years of experience for principals and assistant principals. Two things that I would like to point out, once again, if you look at the bottom two categories, which is the average years' experience for assistant principal and average years' assistant principal with the district, those are the only two that are below the region and the state, and once again, that is due to the reclassification of our SIFs into the assistant principal role. This average is actually averaging their experience in the actual assistant principal role, not their total district experience, so that's why it's low.
Okay.
And that is it for me. Do you all have any questions?
And the last section has to do with tax rate and budget. Mr. Sanchez.
Dr. Canales, Mr. Nieto, members of the board, on the budget information and tax rate, this is for the fiscal year 2017, 2018. This is based on audit information, and TA does not have last year's information yet, so it's one year behind compared to everything else. On the tax rate, the Wesaco ID tax rate is $1.1597, which is $1.16. We are lower compared to Region One, which is $1.28, and the state, which is $1.30. On the maintenance and operation tax rate, we're at $1.1397. We're slightly higher than the state and the region. And the interest and sinking were way low compared to the state and the region. We're at $2 pennies. The Region One is at $17 pennies, and the state at $21 pennies. The next, the bottom row in the first section shows the certified property tax value per pupil. For Wesaco ISD, that represents $124,000. For Region One, $169,000, and for the state, $436,000. That goes to show that we, why we get less property taxes. If you see the first row on the second section, local taxes with a 13.60% collection of revenues from taxes. Region One has 17.43%, and the state 47%. The values are higher over there. On the state, we are funding more than the state and the region, with a 69%, the region at 64%, and the state at 37%. Federal funds, we're about the same with the region, and we're higher than the state. On expenditures, Wesaco ID has 61.69% for instruction, counselors, instructional resources, and staff development. Region One is at 60.44%, and the state at 62.78%, which are a little bit higher than the region and less than the state. And on the debt service, like I mentioned before, we're lower, with a 3.59%, Region One is a 6%, and the state at almost 11%. Any questions on this item?
Board of trustees, just the TAPER report, as we call it, will be available at the websites and different locations. So the website's a TA website, on our district website, in central office, in the Office of Assessment and Accountability with Mr. Trevino, and at campuses, a TAPER report will be made available upon request to the campus principal. And that concludes the TAPER report.
Item number four, public comments on the Texas academic performance report. Anybody that would like to have any comments from the public before I ask the board members? I'll start with my left. Dr. Jaime, any particular comments on the, on the report?
No, sir.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Dr. Canales, to you and your team, great job. You know, I know we just missed being an A-rated district by two points or 1.7, somewhere around those numbers. Principals, teachers, thank you for all you, for everything that you all do. Again, all our support staff, bus drivers, custodians, everybody involved in the district, thank you for all you do for our kids.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes, on page three, let me just congratulate the As that are here, Kleckner-Held, Memorial, Sam Houston, and South Palm. Congratulate, an A. And of the Bs, I see we're somewhere very close to an A. Airport 87, Gonzalez 87, Margot 89, barely missed it, and Maruvara 89. And then, let's see, 86, Central. So again, good job, As and Bs. That's tremendous to all of you, and I know you have a goal. The Bs, you want to become As, so good job on that. On page 32, I have one question. Can you all study this on page 32? Because campus administration, 1.1 at the campus level, is very low compared to the region, the state. So that means we have less administrators at the campus, so kind of just check to see how we are on that. And the last page is 34. On 34, I know you mentioned the salaries that were below Region One and the, and the state, but to me, a beginning teacher is a first-year teacher. So if you all can go back and just give the board on the update what the salary is for a beginning teacher from all the Region One districts? Because this is kind of deceiving. It's higher than 46, but that's what's listed here. So just on the update, give us a list on how we rank. It's very important to have a good salary for the first-year teachers because you get, you get to pick the ones that you feel are the better, better teaching. Again, good job, all the principals, administrators, excellent report. That's all I have. Mr. Lopez?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Coach Quay?
Just to reiterate on the, the direction that we're taking, keep doing a good job, and let's not lose focus on where we need to be and where we want to be. and let's not lose focus on where we need to be and where we want to be. Thank you to everybody for the job well done.
I'll echo what Mr. Gonzalez said and what Dr. Rivera said. All schools did very well. In fact, in all six A schools, we were one of the few schools that received all As and Bs in every, every school. But also, thank you to central office administration for working with the principals, Mr. Aguilar and Mrs. Peterson, and of course, Dr. Canales and the team for working with each school. Because each school has done very well over the last few years. It's indicated by the scores. One area that we need to work on is of course, special ed. Always one that we have to work, and ELL. Other than that, all the other scores, especially in approaches, especially in Meets and Masters. There was more students that received Meets this year. There was more students that received Masters this year, which again, all your hard work has paid off. And like Dr. Rivera, there's certain areas that we, we have to focus on. And I think one of the areas, like you said, central administration at the campus, and of course, maybe the educational aids too, we're a little bit below the state and the region. But I think that's something that Dr. Canales will continue to work with, so that way we can continue to improve. And hopefully this year, like Dr. Rivera, I think he had mentioned before, we're close to 90, 88. I think it's doable for next year. And I think several schools, like Dr. Rivera mentioned, will receive that A with a little bit of more hard work and dedication. I think we'll, we'll have the schools get As, and of course, the As have to be maintained as As. So again, good job, Dr. Canales, to you and your staff, and of course, to the principals.
Thank you, Mr. Canales. Just one point of clarification. The campus administration includes, does not include the campus instructional facilitators, which on campus, just because of the way the TA collects the information. So we'll go ahead and analyze, those are under professional support. So some of those numbers aren't represented. We'll go ahead and get clarification about what that number would be if they were included in that compared to the region and state. So we can do that in the board update if we have it this week.
All right. Any other comments? All right, good job. It is 6:15, 6:17, a German. Are we ready for the regular board meeting?
Yes.
All right, here we go. Sure. To... Ready? Thank you, sir. I call this meeting the Wesco ISD Board of Trustees to order. Let the minutes reflect that we have a quorum of trustees are present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. The time now is 6:18. Those trustees present today are Dr. Jaime Rodriguez, Mr. Andrew Gonzalez, Dr. Richard Rivera, Mr. Erasmo Lopez, and Coach Armando Cuellar, and myself, Mr. Nieto. Opening prayer, Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, we welcome Mrs. Rita Cavassos from Dr. R.E. Margot Elementary, one of our fifth-grade teachers, who will be delivering and leading the invocation.
Thank you, Dr. Canales. Let's bow our heads and close our eyes, please. We thank you, Heavenly Father God, for bringing us here today. We thank you for another day of life that you've blessed each and every one of us, Father God. We ask that you be with the board members today as we come together to meet, Lord God. We pray that you give them a loving heart, Lord God, open their minds, and give them wisdom, Father God, as they work together to lead WISD, Father God. I ask for special blessings, Lord God, for all of WISD staff, from the bus drivers, custodians, to teachers, assistants, counselors, nurses, to our administrators, Father God, and to central office, Lord, but especially for our students, Lord God. We pray, Lord God, that you guard our schools, Father God, and that you make our schools safe for each and every one of us, Lord God, especially our children. We pray that you give the teachers the wisdom, Father God, as we lead these students, Father God, so that they can have a future, Lord God, where they want to work hard and achieve much more than we can possibly dream of, Father God. We ask that you watch over the meeting today, Lord God, in everything that is discussed, and everything that is done, and everything that is voted on, Father God. May you lead these people as they vote, Lord, and may we remember that everything that we do may bring honor and glory to you, Lord. And we ask for blessings for WISD, Lord. In Jesus' name we ask and we pray, amen.
Amen. Item number four, pledge of allegiance and Texas pledge, Dr. Canales.
We have two wonderful students from Dr. Rodolfo E. Margot Elementary. Mr. Robledo will introduce our students.
All right, if we could please have our two individuals step forward as we recognize them. We're going to start off with Jesús Daniel Noriega, who is a fourth-grade student at Rodolfo E. Margot Elementary School, and is the son of Maria and Jesús Noriega. He is a Duke University TIP recipient for receiving a perfect score on the third-grade math star test and receiving a master's distinction in reading, in the reading test. As a fourth-grader, Jesús is involved in UIL numbers sense, winning first place at the campus meet. He also won first place in the campus science fair. Jesús is a magna cum laude student, and he is part of the Boy Scouts Weslaco Pac 40-31, as well as being an altar server at Our Lady of Mercy Church in Mercedes, and also plays the piano. He loves reading and spending time with his family. In the future, Jesús would like to attend the University of Texas at San Antonio, and he is currently exploring different options in his career to find his passion. How about a big hand for Jesús Daniel Noriega? And if his parents are here, family members, can they please stand and be recognized? We would also like to welcome and recognize Stephanie Banderas, who is also in the fourth grade at Margot Elementary. She is the daughter of Lucia and José Banderas. Stephanie is also a Duke University TIP recipient because of her perfect score in the math star test. She also received a master's distinction in the reading star. Stephanie recently won second place in UIL ready, writing at the science fair at her campus, and she is also a member of the Margot Cheerleading Squad and is a magna cum laude student. In her spare time, she enjoys dancing, soccer, volleyball, swimming, reading, and spending time with her family. In the future, Stephanie would like to attend UTRGV to pursue a bachelor's degree in engineering. Her dream is to one day become an engineer. How about a big hand for Stephanie Banderas? And if her family members are here, can they please stand and be recognized for Miss Banderas? Now, if everyone will please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, y'all ready? We'll face the flag over here, and then y'all can lead us whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now the Texas pledge.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Item number five, words and recognitions. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, we have several recognitions this evening. We're always very proud of our students, our staff, our parents, our entire community. Mr. Robledo, will you lead us through the recognitions?
Yes, absolutely. And we're going to start off with some very important band members. So how about a big hand as several of our students enter the room here, our band members? We have several of our band members here from Weslaco High School. And we'd like to start off, several of our high school students recently competed for a spot in the Texas Musician Educators Association All District in All Region Band and Choir. So we'd like to recognize those. First individual won a spot on the TMEA Treble Choir. And as I say your name, if you could please step forward so we could recognize you or raise your hand. And we have Ms. Iris Esabedo. We would also recognize all district band members. We start off with Ms. Emily Van Tilburg. We also have Joseph Cardona. Another all-district band performer, Robert Kusman. Robert here? No, Robert, not here? Okay. We'll go onto all-region band members, and we start off with Ricardo Ibarra. Also, all-region band members, Abraham Mireles. Another member of the all-region band, Antonio Sanchez. And all-region band, also Anthony Anciso. And we'd also like to recognize all-region band and qualifying for area, Efraín Garcia. And the band director at Weslaco High School is Rodrigo Lial. Congratulations. We'd also like to recognize their parents or family members. If they're here, can they please stand and be recognized, family members? How about another big hand as they walk out of the room? Congratulations. Up next, we would like to recognize some band members also from Weslaco East High School. How about a big hand for them? Okay, so from Weslaco East High School, we also have band members who were, won an award for being recognized for the all-district choir, TMEA All District Choir. And we start off with Ashley Pequeno. Can you please raise your hand? Ashley, is she here? Oh, they're coming in here, the choir members now. I think you guys are going to sing later, is that right? No? Okay. We'll start off with Ashley Pequeno. Congratulations. Also, who won a spot on the TMEA All-Region Choir, we have Tabitha Vega. Making All-District Band, we start off with Cassandra Galnarez. Also, All-District Band, Mark Alanis. We have Making All-Region Ninth Grade Band, Evelyn Ramos. All-Region Ninth Grade Band, Ruby Espinosa. Making All-Region Band, also Andrea Perez. And Making All-Region Band and Qualifying for Area is Isabella Sanchez. Also, we would like to congratulate the band director at Weslaco East High School, Armando Cuellar. If their parents are here, parents, family members, can you please stand and be recognized? Thank you very much, and once again, congratulations. Good job, everybody. Up next, we would like to recognize some members of FFA. They just got back from a competition. We'd like to recognize them. How about a big hand as they enter the room? Okay, so tonight, we want to recognize several future Farmers of America students who recently competed in the Citrus Valley Leadership Development Events. We start off with the quiz category, where it tested the team members' understanding of the FFA organization, agricultural education, and current agricultural events. The senior team won first place, and they advanced to area in the quiz category. And these members are, we start off with Emily Cortez. Emily? Cooper Ford? And high-point individual on the team, Kylie Selman. And we also have the Greenhand Team, won first place and advanced to area. Team members are Mia Ramirez, who's, not here, okay. Lilly Ford? And the high-point individual on the Greenhand Team, Javi Garza. In the creed category, members present the FFA creed from memory and answer questions about its meaning and purpose. This event is just one way to boost self-confidence, earn recognition, and develop powerful, organized, and professional communication skills. In the senior division, winning first in district, first in area, and in the top 20 in state, Cooper Ford. In the Greenhand Division, winning first place at Citrus Valley District, second in area, top 20 in the state, Lilly Ford. Congratulations, and we'd also, let's see, like to recognize also their sponsors who are here, Mr. Cadena and Mr. Garza. If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized, parents of these Congratulations once again. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Weslaco would like to invite you to our upcoming show, district show, January 17th through 16th.
Our star show, January 27th through 23rd. The Rio Grande Valley Livestock Show, March 11th through 22nd.
And thank you.
All right, good job. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Put it up on the, on the update.
Okay, we've got some more recognitions. How about we bring out some students here from our CTE program? And these are individuals from CTE Automotive Class. All right, well, several CTE Automotive students recently competed in the Second Annual Texas Green Power F24 Race Series and came home with the championship. Congratulations. Now, to compete, students must complete the race within one and a half hours, use only two batteries, and there is no charging at all, no recharging, and they use three drivers per race. Our students successfully implemented science, technology, engineering, and math skills to enhance tires, suspension, and steering in the Green Power USA Kit Car. They also improved the car's aerodynamics, power control, and gears to win first place in the custom division. Let me recognize these team members. And as I say your name, if you could please step forward so you can be recognized, Angel Arizola. Justice Ethan Mata. Abian Vega. Also on the team, Ricardo Peña. And Julian Villanueva. And also, congratulations to their coach, Carlos Perez. If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Any parents, family members here? Awesome. Once again, congratulations on being the champions. Good job.
Congratulations.
All right, y'all, come on right through here. Good job, everybody.
We'll continue with, uh, item number six, recognition of WISD School Board of Trustees, Dr. Canales.
Yes, proclamation?
No.
Oh, no, 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 no. Okay, I'm sorry, we'll come back to the proclamation.
Cause that's next. Mr. Garcia. Proclamation is after that. Or we wanna do it first?
So Board of Trustees, it is with heartfelt gratitude for your unwavering, and I know I've worked with most of you for over three years now, your unwavering commitment in your heart for children and for staff, for us being the best district in the state and the nation. So it's with that sincere heartfelt gratitude that we recognize you, uh, today and always. We know your service is for free and that you give countless hours away from your family, your children, to support our district goals and to make sure that all our programs are in that continuous improvement cycle so that our students are winners now and for life. So, today, we proudly recognize you. We have students from our Student Advisory Committee, uh, who will be helping with presentations along with Dr. Sergio Garcia. So, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Dr. Canales, and good evening, Board President Nieto and, uh, Board Trustees. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and the audience. It is a privilege to stand before you, as tonight is a very special night. Across the state, school districts are paying tribute to their school boards in celebration of School Board Month. Uh, as if you recall, President Nieto passed a proclamation for School Board Recognition Month at our last board meeting in December. So tonight, WISD honors you for your selfless, unyielding, and dedicated commitment to its students and staff. The theme for this year's celebration is launching the new generation. I want to thank the Parent and Family Engagement Department for the artwork behind you, which will stay there for the rest of the year, and to the Maintenance Department for the creation of these beautiful rockets that are in front of you. These will be displayed throughout the year here in our boardroom, uh, until next year. The schools have also presented you with their tokens of appreciation that are found on the tables in front of you. You may take these after the board meeting and share them with your families. Finally, Dr. Canales, can you please step down? Dr. Canales and students will present you with your service plaques. To introduce each board member, the students have prepared a special presentation. But before that, thank you to our Food Services Department for the cake and the refreshments, and to WHS String Quartet for the entertainment out in the foyer. Okay, students?
Good afternoon. My name is Daniela Cruz, a student, I mean, a student at Cleckler Hald Elementary.
Good afternoon. My name is Aram Rivera, and I am also a student at Cleckler Hald Elementary.
Good afternoon. My name is Sonia Velazquez, and I am a student at Northbridge Elementary.
One of my first jobs was as a school bus driver when I was still in college. Later, I became a coach, and then I was the principal at, at Westlaco High School. And even though I am retired from Westlaco, I came back to continue to serve this district. I have been with the board member for five years. Who am I? Correct. This board member is Mr. Coach Isidoro Nieto.
Hello. Hello, my name is Justin Dovino, and I am from Mariavada Elementary.
Hi, I am Mateo Vaiho, and I'm from Westlaco East High School.
I was, I was a high school principal to a lot of people who are here in this room. I was also a coach to some of the board members that are here. I served Westlaco ISD as a superintendent for a long time. This is my eighth year as a board member. Who am I?
Good afternoon. My name is Alessandra Sustaita, and I'm from Sam Houston Elementary.
Good afternoon. My name is Josie Hernández, and I'm from CT Early College High School.
Just like many of my colleagues here, I was also a football coach. Not so long ago, I played football as a Panther. Now I am a businessman, and I want to help the school district and our students. Who am I?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Allison Romedal, and I attend Memorial Elementary.
Good aft- good afternoon. My name is Madison Martinez, and I'm from Airport Elementary.
I have lived in Westlaco for a long time, and I was the head football coach for the Panthers and the Wildcats. I have served as a board member almost two years. Who am I?
Good afternoon. My name is Logan Ramos, and I am a student from Gonzalez Elementary.
Good afternoon. I am Emily Garcia, and I also attend Gonzalez Elementary.
I like to build things, and I have helped a lot of families build their homes. I am the board member that has been here the longest, 11 years. Who am I?
Hi, my name is Kaylee Wattis, and I'm from Margot Elementary.
Hi, my name is Alejandro Macias, and I attend Silva Elementary.
Good afternoon. My name is Francis Barza, and I go to Cuellar Middle School.
Even though I am a lawyer, I love education, and I was a teacher at one middle school. I am a graduate from Westlaco East as a salutarian. I have been on the board for four years. Who am I?
Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Marine, and I go to Mary Hope Middle School.
Good afternoon. My name is Abigail Chavez, and I attend Central Middle School.
I make sure everyone has 20/20 vision, but I also make, but I also make sure our district is running smoothly. When another board member left, I was selected to serve. I have been on the board for three years. Who am I?
This concludes our, uh, board appreciation presentation. Thank you, students, for helping us out. Thank you. Any, uh, any comments from the board members, uh, Coach Cuellar?
Our heartfelt thanks for the recognition, and it's an honor to serve each and every one of you and all our children of Westlaco ISD. Again, thank you very much for, for this recognition.
Mr. Lopez?
Uh, also, thank you very much, uh, y'all went way out of your way to, uh, uh, recognize us for something that we really love to do. And that's help our kids here in the community and, and, uh, and, you know, work with our teachers and really look at the rewards that we get by seeing our kids succeed in, in life. Thank you very much.
Dr. Rivera?
Yeah, thank you, students. And I was thinking one day, you know, we've been up here many, many years, but the kids, one day, one day, you all might be up here too. So, thank you again, and, and always, always remember to, that education is a great equalizer, and always strive to be the best in school. And for the seniors, we'll see you in a few months as you graduate. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you. I, I know our kiddos left, but, uh, it truly is an honor to be up here to serve our community and, uh, to see the choices that we make for the betterment of our, of our staff here at our WISD and the kiddo. So, again, thank you for everything.
Dr. Jaime?
Uh, same here. Thank you so much, you know, thank you for the principals, uh, and the students who participated in this, and, you know, I, I, it's really, uh, an honor and a privilege to, to be up here to serve, uh, our district and our community, and again, thank you, uh, for, for the recognition.
I echo what every, each one of them said. Thank you very much for everything that, that you, that the students did for us, and of course, the principals had a, and administration, uh, had a big part in it. So, uh, thank you very much.
Item number seven, proclamation for National Guidance and Counseling Week, February 3rd through the 7th, 2020. Dr. Canales.
Board Trustees, we have several counselors here. Will you please stand up so we can recognize you before we get started? Counselors, thank you for being here. Thank you for your countless hours. You take care of our children every single day. You make sure they're ready to learn. You make sure they understand the importance of learning. You help them navigate through that graduation that we expect, and you do so much more. You serve as our communities, um, you're there for staff when we need you, and all kinds of things. You're awesome. You are the best. So, Mr. Robledo, please read the proclamation.
We have a proclamation. You can please remain standing, counselors. Whereas school counselors are employed in our schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help prepare, focus in ways to further the education, personal, and social growth of their children, therefore, I, Isidoro Nieto, or Mr. Nieto, President of the Westlaco Independent District Board of Trustees, does hereby support proclaim February 3rd through the 7th, 2020, as National Guidance and Counseling Week. Congratulations, counselors.
Item number eight, public comments. We don't have any public comments tonight?
Thank you for all y'all do.
All right. We have one item that we would like to move up to, uh, uh, up on the agenda, which is item, uh, 12A, because they're moving, uh, or they're driving to Austin right afterwards. So, do I, do I need a motion for that, Mr. Kerr?
Board President, just take it out of order.
Okay. So I'm taking, uh, 12A out of order, which is gonna be right now with the public comments. And it's, uh, what's that? Yes. 12A. Correct, Mr. Lopez?
That's correct.
Okay. So, uh, discussion is possible action for the board to consider approval of the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended August 31st, 2019. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, this is an annual requirement. Uh, we are recommending that you approve the comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR for Westlaco ISD, for the fiscal year ended August 31st, 2019, as presented by the audit firm Burton McCumber &amp; Longoria, LLP. We do have Mr. Longoria here and Mr. Lopez. They did meet with Mr. Sanchez and I on Friday to go over the highlights of the audit. We're in a good place, and the feedback they provide, we will use it to be even better. So, Mr. Longoria?
Correct. Thank you, Dr. Canales, members of Board Trustees. Again, for the record, my name is Ricky Longoria. I'm an audit partner with the firm Burton McCumber &amp; Longoria, and I thank you for allowing us to be of service to the district. First and foremost, first and foremost, I shared with you during the interview process that I too am a fellow colleague of y'all's, and that I serve with a, with another board within the district. I want to congratulate you all for, for y'all's service. Uh, I can certainly, I've sat in your, y'all's seats, if you will, uh, for 12 years, and, and, uh, you know, I totally understand the, the commitment that, that you all make to the kids within the district that you all serve, the families, and also the fact that your, your own family is making that commitment with you. And so, congratulations for, for And so, congratulations for, for everything that, that you all do. Also, too, congratulations to Westaco ISD and as a whole. You all are doing very well. Again, I'm a board member standing in the back and I get excited by watching kids and how happy they are. I get excited about the enthusiasm in the room and the positive, if you will, environment that I think you all have. So, congratulations in that, in that regard. I, I am having to drive to Austin as soon, as soon as I'm done, but certainly I'm here to do a job and that is to let you know how, how the audit went. I have not lost sight of the fact, if some of you are interested, I know some of you are coaches, that the national championship game is going on tonight and some of you may want to get out of here sooner rather than later. So, so I will keep my presentation, to my short version. Sometimes my short version is someone's long version, but this presentation is your presentation and so to extend, if you need for me just to kind of cut it off, get straight to the point, that's exactly what I'll do. In the meantime, I will proceed as I had planned, Mr. President. First of all, this is just a required discussion. Hopefully it won't take me more than a couple of minutes, but in your packet, you should have received a letter with, with our letterhead and it's, it's not the report itself. It's outside of the, of the particular report and it's called the governance letter. You all welcome to, to read along. Let's just kind of let me go, go through it and you all can, can listen along, but I do have a professional obligation to cover this letter with you. Again, I'm not going to read the letter. I do want to talk about the spirit of, of the letter. The intent of, of the letter is really to, to, as best as the profession can, try to bridge what the public believes auditors do versus what we actually do within the actual profession. I will summarize by saying, I think, a lot of folks think that auditors go into an organization such as you all and audits every single transaction and every single activity and that's certainly not the case. Everything that we do in accordance with the, the standard is done on a sample basis. And so, so the first paragraph or the first point of this particular letter is just acknowledging that, that we do perform our audit in accordance with standards. There's also government auditing standards and uniform guidance. The district is subject to single audit because it does receive federal funds. The biggest federal fund source, of course, relates to the school lunch program. So, ju- just acknowledging that aspect. Also acknowledging that even any set of financial statements, whether yours or anybody else's, accounting is not an exact science. People think it is because things have to balance and that is true. But there is some judgment involved in preparing financial statements, estimates. One of the estimates, for example, would be, say, your allowance for, for uncollectible taxes. The reality is that, you know, every institution does not collect 100% of its taxes and therefore it is, there, there's an estimate in determining, well, how much of that uncollectability is or built into the financial statements. There are things like that, depreciation, for example, on a piece of equipment. Some people may think it's five-year life. Some people may think it's a seven-year life. Again, those are estimates involved in the preparation of a set of financial statements. Also, also acknowledging that, that we did post some adjustments. A copy of, of the adjustments are included within, within this particular letter, but the audit process, you know, sometimes there are things that come about during the audit process and there were some adjustments posted. But just recognize it, we presented those adjustments to management and those adjustments have been accepted and recorded and reflected within the financial statements. And if I'm going too fast, please tell me to slow down. Acknowledging that management just, just take, just take, uh, just take responsibility for the financial statements themselves. In y'all's case, it's actually rather unique and kudos to you all in this, in this particular regard. And I don't know if you all knew this or at least maybe appreciate the difference, but the minimum report, reporting requirement for, for the school district is called the annual financial report. It's a basic financial report that most districts puts together. I will say, even in our, in our particular case, we just produce an annual financial report. In y'all's case, you all have decided to do better than what other folks have done and so you all prepare what's called a comprehensive annual financial report. And so, what's the difference? One is the amount of information included within the report itself. So, you all's report compared to other reports includes a lot of information for the public to know about, but the public and yourselves in making decisions with respect to the district. And so, for example, if you want to know what the history of, of ADA has been over the past 10 years, that information is in there. If you want to know what the history of collectibility of account, of tax receivable has been, that is in there. If you want to know what the history of the tax rate for Westaco ISD has been, that is in there. That is not in every, in, in, in every report out there and you do it, I think, because you want to do something special. And so, in, in, in addition to that, one other thing that you all are doing and my accolades to you all for, in this effort, is you all are submitting your audit, your comprehensive annual financial report to the GFOA for an award. And last year was the very first year that, that you all did that. And sometimes, like, like a lot of things, you do it the first time and some, sometimes you're not as successful in doing it. And this particular year, you will be submitting this particular report to the GFOA. It's a Government Finance Officers Association Award that recognizes financial statements that have been put together in a, in a matter that is transparent to the public and includes information for the public to, to appreciate. And so, we're hoping this year, you know, you all will, will actually submit it and hopefully next year we'll be celebrating, along with all the other celebrations that you all have, an award called the GFOA Certificate Award. So, I want to acknowledge that as well. Going, going back to, to the letter, just acknowledging that there were no disagreements with management during the course of the audit. Certainly, there, there may be times during an audit process that we may disagree on a particular transaction, but that's part of the normal process. So, all in all, I would tell you that there were no disagreements with management during, during the course of the audit. There are other items within the letter, but in my mind, those are probably the most important of all sitting in your shoes and so those are the things I wanted to bring up with respect to that letter. Any questions with this, so far? And so, I'm going to go dive into the, the actual report itself. I'm going to turn to page nine and I don't know if you all have just a hard copy or whether you all have electronic copy. But in this presentation, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to try to do it from, from the, from the perspective of my fellow board members and that is, not every board member is an accountant. Not every board member is, is, is an audit, an auditor. So, my, my board members say, well Ricky, if you weren't here, what's the most important thing you want, you, you would want me to know? And so, and so that's a perspective that I'm, that I'm, I'm going to bring. And I kid you not, those items are probably three or four different items. And if you know these three or four, three or four different items, I, I think you would understand the financial statements and what this, what this audit represents. And two, I think it will make you a better board member, not only today, but also as you move forward, as they present financial information to you. And so, on, on page nine is, is our actual audit report. And in, in our mind, this is the most important thing that we do. We render an opinion on, on the financial statements that are being presented to you. I'm not going to read it all, but if, if, if you, that, if you look at the last paragraph on page nine, and it's a two-pager, but I will summarize by saying this. I said, I, I, I always tell my board members, all, at this point, you just need to know, did you have a clean opinion or not? Okay? The answer is yes, you had a clean opinion. And so, check. So, that's, that's one thing that, that you all should know. It's, by our terms, it's called, it's called an unmodified opinion, but just to let you know, you all have had a clean opinion and it's really consistent with the opinion that you have, that you all have gotten in the past. Any questions on that?
Let me ask you this.
Sure.
We had a booklet on Friday and one today. Is there a difference in these two? Is there more on one? Andres? Is it the same information?
Yeah, there's a couple of dates that we had wrong. That's why we revised it. But no, the numbers, everything, that's.
Everything's the same?
Yes.
There's the one Friday and the one right now?
Yes. The reports are all the same.
What about on the letter?
No, on...
The letter that was given to us Friday, which is this one and one just right now.
Okay, so, so what you have in your left...
Are they different?
No, yeah, they're different because the one in, in your, in your left hand, my right, that's, you're, that's the governance letter. That's, that's, that's the letter that I just went over right now. The other letter that, that you have, and we'll, we'll discuss that as well, that's called the other comments letter. And so, we will discuss this as well. Okay? So, so gentlemen, and, and Dr. Canales, if you can turn to page 23. And again, there's over 150 pages. There's about 150 pages. We're not going to go over 150 pages tonight. But again, I get back to the most important thing to know. And so, and so, if, if there's one thing I tell folks, I said, if there's one number in the financial statements that you kind of live and die by and that is fund balance. And y'all may have heard, I'm sure y'all have heard the term in y'all's training, but if there's, if there's one thing, as you move forward, board members and you ask a question about fund balance, because every institution lives and dies by fund balance. And the fund balance is really what's left over all, all the years activities have been done. In other words, have you, are you accumulating the savings account? Some people refer to it as, as a rainy day fund. And so, and so, obviously, having sometime a minimum level of, of a rainy day fund is good. And, you know, and some, some people will argue, well, the more rainy day fund you have, you know, the better. Some people argue, well, there's such thing as having too much. And, and that's a judgment call. But, but I will say this, on page 23, your unassigned balance is $38 million. And that actually increased over last year and so that's an important thing to know. Your fund balance increased over last year. And then, I made, I made reference to, well, how many days of fund balance do you, do you have available? And so, in the past, under, under your first rating, there was a question and the question was, do you have positive fund balance or not? And that was the essence of the question. Most districts have positive fund balance. But now, going forward, the first rating is now, it's asking you for historical. They're asking, do you have a fund balance over the past three years that's at least X? And we talked about this during the meeting and so we encourage you all to do that computation so you'll know what, what, what your minimum fund balance should be. Now, if I, if I play, if I apply what, what would be considered just a generally accepted benchmark and going back to the Government Finance Officers Association puts out a benchmark, different than TEAs, but still a data point to, to, to compare with, you all have about 80 to 90 days worth, worth of fund balance. And I will say that that's, that's good. You know, usually the benchmark is about 90 days. So, so that's a good thing. And again, as, as, as you move forward and as you enter the transactions and as, as you hear your finance department present things, I would encourage you to always ask, what is the impact on fund balance? Because at the end of the day, the organization will live and die by fund balance. In fact, if you ever try to issue new debt and have been in a conference call with the folks out of New York, want to know, you know, what the financial viability is of, of the district, they'll always ask you, what are your thoughts on fund balance? How much you have in fund balance? How much you project to have in fund balance? And similar type of questions. Any questions on that? And I've got like two more points and I'm going to jump over to the comments section. I lost my pages. So, turning to page 25. So, again, just going straight to, straight to, to the bottom line against acknowledging, I said, well, y'all increased fund balance. If you go to page 25 and you go to maybe like the fourth line up, you'll say, you'll see a line 1200 net change in fund balance. And so, for the August 31st, 2019 year, you actually increased fund balance by 7.4 million dollars. Okay? Now, you see a $12 million next to it, right? That, that's in brackets. That, that relates to construction funds and so they're, they're, the way you look at them is a little different. And so, I, just know that you're using construction. I know you all have a construction project and those are funds being used for construction, but the general fund to me is, is a key.
So, what did you say, the 7 million?
The 7.4 million.
What did that represent?
It's an increase, it's an excess of revenues over expenditures.
Okay.
Okay? As of, for the year August 31st, 2019, which then increases fund balance.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And then I've got one other number I want to share with you. And... So, so the vast majority of, of activities within, within the school district will, will fall within the general fund. It's a lot of activity, hence my focus on that, why you should always ask what's, what's fund balance. But acknowledging that there's other activities going on. And so, if there's one particular fund that I always tend, tend to keep an eye on, and I think you all have two, is, is your self-insurance fund. And so, if you turn to page, let's go to page 90. So, so a healthcare cost for any institution has always been a challenge. I don't care if you're in government. I don't care if you're in business. It's always been a challenge. And so, and so, so every district, and I'll use ours as, and example, faces that, that same challenge as well, is if you're self-insured, are you, are you generating enough revenue with any self-insurance fund to be able to cover the expected costs? And again, health insurance costs continue, continue to, to, to increase. In fact, the increase, they're outpacing the, the rate, rate of inflation. And so, so the revenues in, in a self-insurance fund, specifically the health fund, are really coming from two sources. They're coming from what the district is willing to put in on behalf of employees and also what employees are, what they're being asked to, to contribute as well. And it's always, it's always y'all's decision as to what those percentages are in terms of how, of how, how those revenue streams are coming in. But is, if there's one thing that I would ask you to look at as you move forward is, in my self-insurance fund, are we at least breaking even? Okay? And, and so, so if you look at page 90 and look, looking, and there's other funds too that are there, but I want to focus on the self-insurance fund. If you look in the change in net position, in the change in, in net position, so, so you all had actually more expenditures within the, the self-insurance fund.
We're not breaking even.
Not yet.
That was a question.
Not yet. You're, you're not breaking even. And, but, but I, I will say this. At, 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 at the end of the day, the fund, the, the fund balance in that account is $135,000 as of August 31st. So, you're almost breaking even, but not quite. But that is one fund where I've seen, and I'm sure you may have seen it as well, for the other district, you may have a million dollar deficit or $2 million seven and I'll be honest with you, if you look back historically at Westaco ISD and look at that fund balance, it, it was a lot more than, than it is right now. And so, and so anytime you have a negative fund balance in a corresponding fund, that's, that tells me that there's a drain coming out of that general fund, right? Because some, some, somebody's got to make up that deficit. And, you know, and, and so, I, I would just ask you, again, I go back to what, what I told my colleagues on the board, to keep your eye on that health insurance fund. I know, I know you're working on it because I can see it in the minutes, but just don't leave sight of that particular general fund. I mean, general fund. That, that's self-insurance fund.
So, you, you said that $135,000 is the...
Right, right now, it's a deficit. So, it's not breaking even in the sense that it's zero or above.
Correct.
But $135,000 is more than a couple of million it was two, two, three years ago.
Correct. But that's effective of August 31st.
Yeah, so, so if you all implemented any type of changes, I don't know if your, if your health plan starts on January 1 or, or corresponds with your, with your fiscal year. So, so there's a decision to be made, if, if it's January 1, there's a decision to be made or was a decision to be made about, well, you know, are we, are we going to kick this in or are the employees going to, going to kick in? And to me, that, that goes to a whole other discussion about compensation. Now, how does that relate to the total compensation to the employee? Okay? Okay. So, tho- those are the two, three numbers that I tell my, my colleagues, always keep a look at. If there's a budget amendment to be made in the future, I always ask, what's affected the general fund? Okay? If, if, if there's a budget to be done for the entire year, I always ask, well, what's our budget, what is our general fund going to look like after, after this budget year? So, again, I keep harping on it, but I hope you walk away with... I remember the auditor once told me, always check on the general fund. Okay? Any questions on the numbers? Because I'm going to jump over to the comments. Okay? So, so on, on the, on the comments, we can handle them one, one of two ways and I need y'all's guidance. There are, there are, there are, let me count them. Hold on. One, two. Yeah, there's a total of four comments. Two, two, two comments are bound in this particular report and, and there's two comments in a side letter, which is one that Dr. Rivera was, was referring to.
Yeah, on the letter on Friday, you have, you have two findings.
Correct. Correct. And so, and so why, why the difference? Why, why are there two different reports? One is, is the one in, in the back of the report are more important. They're, they're, they're required communications related to internal controls that, that by the definition, it's called, it's considered a significant deficiency. Okay? And so, and so we went, we, we went over these in detail, again, with, with, with the team, if you will. And so, so I, I can just, just, just acknowledge that those, those comments are there and you all can go through them and maybe speak, speak to Dr. Canales separately or we can discuss them in more detail here today. And so, I, I need y'all's guidance as to what you would like to see.
But just a question that I have.
Sure.
Again, we have two letters and I don't know why, you know, we should have gone both, Andres, on Friday and not one today where the board has to read everything at once. So, two letters, one dated Friday and one dated just right now. So, on the one on Friday, you have two, two recommendations. They were, they were not findings.
Yes.
On this one. Are these two, are these two comments, recommendations on this second letter or in the booklet itself?
No, because the, the, it leads to how the auditor classifies the, the recommendations. So, there is, there are basically three different categories. One is the material weakness and the significant difference. One is the material weakness and the significant deficiency. The material weakness being the most severe, if you will. And those are the ones that get reported in the balance report. And then there's other comments that, hey, you know, certainly, they don't meet the definitions of a significant and material weakness, but we still want to convey them to you. We still think they're important enough for us to put it in writing, for you all to give us some consideration. So, that's why you have this separate letter.
So, on the one from Friday, on the comments, one said that we do not have the computerized program?
Correct.
And on the second one, if I understand this, it says that this is, we don't have the employees, whenever they leave, they still stay on, where they sign checks?
Yeah, so two things, and I'll go, I'll speak to both of them. One of them is, you do have a system to track your fixed assets, okay? And that's acknowledging the letter.
The first one, right.
Yeah, and that's an Excel spreadsheet. The problem is, if you think about a district of your size, having an Excel spreadsheet for 1,900 different items just leads to the possibility of error.
And why don't we have it?
I understand that your system allows it, and I don't know if that's a question for Fisher Sanchez, but...
Dr. Rivera, we have maintained them in Excel for a long time.
Yeah, but there's no chance for error that way, instead of being computerized.
Right, right. Well, we have the formulas, so, what you're saying is that we might make a mistake and not catch it, or something like that, so to rather use that depreciation program. We have one in the system, we just kind of use it, because we'll have to transfer everything into it, but we will do it.
Okay, but it was a recommendation from him.
Yes, yeah, and just so you'll know, our point of reference, and maybe just obvious, you didn't need someone to go do a study about this, but Price Waterhouse Coopers, which is one of the largest firms in the world, did a study on Excel spreadsheets and...
So, on the second one, you come up with a system where they don't, when someone leaves, they're removed from signing checks?
Correct.
You've done that already?
Yes, we work with them, the bookkeepers, the...
He's right here, he's right here, he haven't done it.
No, we haven't had any problem with it. What you're saying is to make sure that whenever they leave, like when we have a routine, that when employee leave, they have to go to all their departments to check out, to make sure that they notify us like that. So, we make sure we don't miss it.
Yeah, and part of it, part of it is more the documentation of the actual procedure, you know, is that process really documented? You know, sometimes people can do things, is that just the way it's done? But you gotta put that in writing, sometimes, just like any other procedure, and that's really essential.
One last question, then I'll, that's my last question. On the letter from Friday, it says here that you all can perform additional study on some of these matters?
Where are you...
Well, the letter from Friday, January 8th, the last paragraph.
Yeah, 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 so to the extent, if you want to engage us, to help us, to help with either this matter, or any other matter, we're always here for you.
And you feel that we need it?
I'm sorry?
You feel that we need it?
No, I don't think so, you know, think about the two things that are specific to this particular letter. So, one is, one is, you, within your allele system, it already has the ability to track fixed assets, it just hasn't been utilized. And so, in my mind, next year, when we come, we'll check it.
So, an easy question.
Yeah.
We're doing okay as a district.
Well, and again, I think, you know, I think...
With a few problems, everything is okay.
Yeah, well, I think...
So, I think, Mr. Neteau, I think we have questions we can meet with the superintendent.
Yes, sir.
If we have any questions at a workshop later.
Oh, no, absolutely.
So, we'll let you go to, where, Austin, Dallas?
I am driving to Austin, and I don't know what time is it, but I'll probably be there about 1 o'clock in the morning.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Neteau, I'm ready to approve it.
Okay.
Whenever we get there. Any comments, questions?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all, and thank you all for allowing us to be of service to you all, and thank the finance department.
And I'll see you in El Salvador in about two weeks.
Yeah, and we'll see you sooner, Dr. Rivera. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a safe trip.
Dr. Rivera, we have a motion? Yes.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Rivera, and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. To approve a comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending August 31st, 2019. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, we go back to item number nine, superintendent's report. Dr. Gonzalez?
We have three items. The first one is district enrollment and ADA, average daily attendance. Our enrollment for the 17th week compared to last year in 2019, the difference is 156, so it's 156 less students enrolled. Our ADA, when you compare 17th week in 2019 to 2020, it says a difference of five, but according to my math, that's six. So, we have six less than we did, in terms of ADA, than last year. So, our ADA right now is at 96.63. Last year was at 96.40.
Andres, one question on this. On your budget, it's based on the best four, six weeks. So, what you budget, where we are now in the average of three, six weeks, are we...
Right now, and I have a report coming up, we're okay, we're doing good, because of the SASE program that we have, the recovery in ADA.
Okay.
Compared to budget this.
We budgeted on, what, 15, what was it, 15?
751.
751, yes.
You're okay with the budget?
Yes, sir.
And just for clarification, we did not meet the migrant numbers, so we have to count all six weeks.
All six weeks, right.
Yes.
Can I see it on page?
And then, right, and then, so here we go for enrollment by campus level. 116 difference, less students in elementaries, 27 more in middle schools, 32 less in high schools, 13 less in alternative, and 22 less in Alpha Academy, that's 156. And you also have the ADA difference there. So, for average daily attendance comparison, there you have the first week, six weeks, second and third. The average daily attendance for the first three weeks is 15, 809 this year versus 15, 814 last year, that's a five. And then, you have the total DA for the year, also there for you. And then, you do have the impact of the SASE program on the slide two, 620, 744, and 548. So, there's no questions about ADA. We'll move on to health insurance, self-funded. Mr. Delarosa?
Good evening again. This is the standard self-funded health insurance presentation that we submit every month. So, this year on medical claims, we spent approximately $3.2 million versus last year at 3.7. That's a decrease of approximately $513,000. Prescription drugs were actually running about the same this year from last year at $1.4 million. Actually, it's a decrease of $1,400. And then finally, fixed costs at one, just a little over $1 million last year versus $682,000 approximately this year. So, everything included from September through the end of December were at $5,304,0872. That's a decrease last year of $843,183.22. As you did note, that we were billed for our September stop-loss premium in December, so that's just a breakdown of our admin fees that I present every month. And just a comment on Mr. Longoria's statement about the self-funded balance, we did significantly increase both district and employee contributions for the 1920 plan year. So, moving forward, hopefully, we'll break even. As far as our self-funded workers' compensation program, number of claims, 50 last year compared to this year at 23. We've incurred $78,158.76 through December versus last year of $158,316.69. So, we're doing well in our workers' compensation program. If anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Delarosa. And for our final section of the superintendent's report, we do have our benchmark. We had benchmarks at all our campuses, and Mr. Aguilat and Mrs. Peterson are here to present on, highlights on that.
Good afternoon. We just want to keep you informed of our benchmarks, our comprehensive benchmarks. As you know, we do have data from last year, from 2018 and 19, Benchmark 1 compared to 1920 Benchmark 1, and you see it broken down by approaches, meets and masters in reading, third, fourth and fifth grade, or writing, third, fourth and fifth grade math, and our fifth grade science. So, you see to the right, you see the green, that's a growth. We had some very good growth last year. We're continuing the growth this year, moving forward, and this is attributed to everyone working very hard. Central office staff, strategists, campus principals, teachers, they're all in the trenches, or they're working extremely hard. I want to emphasize on the meets and the masters, that's our post-secondary rigor. We had a slight decrease in the reading at the masters, very little, as well as a fifth grade math at the masters, just a slight drop. Fifth grade science, we made some adjustments. The cut points did go up, there's still some areas of need that we're working on, but it wasn't a significant difference. And, of course, a lot of the objectives are introduced right now. So, they are taking release state tests at this time, which is very strong, that they're showing growth, because they still have time to polish it. And that's something that we're gonna continue working on.
This is the middle school and high school data here, then. You see where we are for the masters, see a lot of green across the board. Again, sixth grade is our problem area in both reading and math, so that's one the strategists are watching closely. Eighth grade math, we'll recover from that, because those students do have two opportunities to test. Biology is just slightly behind where they were last year, but Mrs. Martinez is working very closely monitoring the biology scores. So, again, same, we're focusing on meets and masters, and not just the approaches.
Also, wanted to share with you that our strategists do work very hard. We want to make sure we take care of our fundamentals, preparation, planning and hard work. There's a lot of communication taking place, so you can see here, these are recommendations, samples for our elementary and secondary, they give recommendations out after every assessment. So, you see that for math, for science. We also have newsletters that our strategists work with, so they're samples with all their PLCs, recommended practices, weekly updates, constant communications with all stakeholders, elementary and secondary. You see that with our math as well, secondary math, a lot of communication, and you see that going through our social studies and science as well.
So, simple question, overall, you're doing better than last year?
Yes, sir.
Overall?
Yes, sir.
Good job?
Thank you.
Want to thank Erica Trevino for putting the graphs together for us. She took her Clorox spot, and she's doing a great job. And I encourage Mr. Trevino, helps a lot for that first presentation also.
Thank you.
Total collaborative effort.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Next item, item number 10, Cassena Agenda. I'll start with my left side. Do we have to pull two out, Andres? Or no?
No.
We're good, right.
The item on the vehicles, we added one van to it, and I added the December report that I hadn't received it.
Okay. So, on my left, Dr. Hamby?
I have none.
Mr. Gonzalez?
None.
Mr. Rivera?
None, none.
Mr. Lopez?
None.
And Coach Kuehl?
None.
And I don't have any to pull for the Cassena Agenda, do I have a motion? Motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gonzalez? By Dr. Rivera?
Mr. Lopez.
Okay. Motion by Dr. Rivera, and second by Mr. Gonzalez, to approve the Cassena Agenda? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's go to discussion items. Item number 11, item eight, interim financial report for the four months ended December 31st, 2019. Dr. Gonzalez?
Director Christie's, Mr. Sanchez will take the highlight of this discussion item.
Yes. Mr. Neteau, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the board, for the four months ended December 31st, 2019, in the general fund, we had budgeted $183,844,000. We have received $71,800,000, that represents 38.62%. On expenditures on all the functions, we have a budget of $189,183,000. We have expended or encumbered $57,620,000, that represents 30.46%. Just for four months, we're doing good. For the four months, we should be at 33.33%, so we're below the average on all the functions. It's a couple of functions that are over that amount, but right now, there are no...
And this is a comparison to last year?
Excuse me?
The percent, is it comparison to last year, that we're at 30%?
No, 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 33.33% represents four months of the year.
Okay.
So, since we're in December, we should be about 33, so we're at 30.4, we're below 3%.
Okay.
And this is a no-action item?
Right. All right, item B. Here's one quick question.
Yes, sir.
You have more revenues than expenditures as of that date?
Yes, sir.
So, what's your fund balance as of that date? The money you receive, the money you spend, are you...
We have received 13.3 million more than we have expended.
How much more?
13, right now, as of December.
Than what you spent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Good. All right. Item B, acknowledgment of Hidalgo County Tax Office Collection Report for November 2019, current taxes and delinquent taxes. Dr. Gonzalez?
This is also a no-action item, board members, Mr. Sanchez?
Yes. In November, for November 2019, our current taxes, we collected $2,102,000, and that represents 8.29%. Last year, we collected 5.84 for the same four months, and that is 2.45% higher than last year. On the delinquent taxes, we collected 247,022, that is 6.22%. Last year, we had collected 6.79%, so that represents 0.57% less collections.
As of November?
For November, yes, sir.
Okay, as of November.
Right.
So, in December, that's when you get your amounts going up higher?
They went up, yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments? All right. Item C, acknowledgment of Hidalgo County Tax Office Collection Report for December 2019, current taxes and delinquent taxes.
So, here's the December report, Mr. Sanchez.
For December 2019, in current taxes, we have collected through December, $10.5 million. That represents 41.41%. Last year, we had collected 40.35, so that represents 1.06% more collection than last year. On delinquent taxes, we collected 277,741, that is 7.02%, last year, we had collected 8.74. So, we collected 1.72% less delinquent taxes than last year.
Okay. Any comments? All right. From number 12, discussion, possible action items, where we took care of 12A, we're gonna go 12B. Discussion, possible action for the board to consider approval of the administration's recommendation to qualify companies that submitted qualification statement responses to proceed to the second phase of the selection process for the design and replacement of HVAC controls at Wesco East High School. RFQ number 200107. Dr. Gonzalez?
Director Christie's, the HVAC controls at Wesco East High School are obsolete and continue to be problematic. Over the last few years, the focus has been on repairing and/or maintaining the systems. However, that is becoming more difficult since parts that we need have been discontinued. This issue has resulted in constant HVAC problems that are affecting the ability to control a viable temperature inside the building, thus resulting in poor space comfort for the high school. The Wesco ISD HVAC department is recommending a complete replacement of the HVAC controls at the campus. We received a total of three qualification statements. As part of the design-build method of construction, school districts may approve up to five firms. Administration is recommending that the school board approve two of the three submitted qualification statements, and qualify them for the second step of this project. Both vendors provided information that shows they are capable of performing this project. One vendor, Unify Energy Solutions from San Antonio, Texas, is not being recommended for step two of this project. They are a dealer's representative of an HVAC controls manufacturer based in Canada. And we have staff here to answer questions about it.
America, you okay? Move to approve?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Rivera, and a second by Mr. Gonzalez, to approve the administration's recommendation as the two vendors, they were submitted, correct? And to proceed to the second phase of the selection process for the design and replacement of HVAC controls at Wesco East High School. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve C, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to hire the services of a mechanical engineering firm to assist the district as an independent engineer to oversee the design and replacement of the HVAC controls at Wesco East High School Project. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, at the November eleventh, twenty nineteen, board meeting, you approved the following, to use the design-build method of construction for the replacement of HVAC controls at Wesco East High School, delegated the ranking authority to administration, and you approved the criterion points to be used for this project as presented. Under the design-build method of construction, the district will hire a design-build team that includes contractor, engineers and/or architects for the replacement of HVAC controls at Wesco East High School. The district will need the assistance of an engineer that will work independent from the design-build team for the oversight of the project. Administration is recommending that the board approve Trinity MEP Engineering PLLC from Wesco, Texas, as the independent engineer for this project, so we ask for your approval.
America, are you okay? America, move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera, and a second by Mr. Lopez, to approve Trinity, to hire the service of Trinity Mechanical Engineering Firm to assist the district as an independent engineer to oversee the design and replacement of HVAC controls at Wesco East High School Project, correct?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Andres, it's budgeted, you got the money?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's part of that, it doesn't affect...
It's taxed out.
Okay. All right, any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?